First order of business for the planning board is approval of the meeting minutes from February 3rd, 2022. George, did you have some comments?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. Okay.
I'll call my team to order now?
Well, I'm gonna open up, I'm gonna open up the public hearing for the planning board, then Phil, you can open up the public hearing for the EDC.
All right, did you do a roll call?
No, but I'm going to, once I, when I open this up. So I am now officially opening the public hearing for the joint public hearing between the EDC and the planning board on proposed amendments to section 206.7 signs of zoning ordinance. And I'm now gonna do a quick roll call. I'm Charles Roberts, I'm here. George Tlumses?
George Tlumses, Planning Board Vice Chair.
David Chichester?
David Chichester, alternate.
Mark Maloney? Okay, and absent is Emily Ash and Natty Assi. Okay. Phil, your turn.
Okay, I'm gonna call this joint meeting of the planning board and the EDC. This meeting is being hosted and recorded by the planning board, if anybody else is doing it, I gather. I'm gonna do a roll call now, if I can get to the right page. I'm Counselor Elmer, I'm here. Counselor Bullock?
I'm here.
Okay. Counselor Disorder?
Present.
Counselor Healy? Doesn't seem to be here. And Counselor Mayo, I don't see him. If they show up, I'll say something. So I think I hand it over to you, Chuck.
Great. Yeah, thanks Philip. So yeah, thanks for, thanks for joining us here this evening for this sign ordinance. Eric's gonna start off giving us some background on the ordinance and how it came to be and why we're involved in this process right now.
Thank you, Mr. German. This is gonna be brief, just so everyone understands why we moved forward with proposed amendments to the signed ordinance. Greenfield had a rapid recovery plan done, funded by the State Department of DHC D, Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. The plan was done in 2021, and it had 12 key recommendations in the plan. What a rapid recovery plan is, is based on the COVID pandemic, how do communities come out of it economically resilient and move forward? So this plan highlighted some things that Greenfield could do to recover. And one of them was to amend our sign ordinance to make it, A, clear, B, remove duplication of permitting, and C, allow additional signage that isn't currently allowed. So I'm gonna summarize what these proposed amendments are in a couple of sentences. These are minor amendments. If you look at the amendments that were done, there's only a few things strikes out with new language added in there. And what we did is the following. Made it very clear that businesses on second floor of buildings, tenants, can have a sign on the second level. The other thing we did was make it very clear that you, if you are a corner building, fronted by two streets, you can put a sign on both sides that front the street. That was not clear before. The other thing we did was remove the licensing commission requirement approval for sandwich board signs or awning signs. But there is one type of sign that we have kept the licensing commission involved with, and if everyone's familiar with Taylor's Restaurant, the big green awning that comes out with the poles, that's a pretty significant type of signage and awning. So that is still gonna require licensing commission approval, but all other signage licensing commission approval has been removed. Those are the basic amendments, and welcome to hear public comment on the proposed amendments.
Thank you, Eric. At this time, the planning board and the EDC welcome any public comments. If you're in the public and you wish to speak, you can type something in the chat, or you can simply raise your hand, as I don't see a whole lot of people here.
Hi.
Okay, Julie Page?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, just please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Julie Page. I'm of Nine Minor Street, and I've lost track of how long ago I did some research and work on signage in Greenfield, especially the part of the ordinance that talked about moving signs. And I'm really glad to see a lot of those changes incorporated in this. Eric, I dumped way too much research on you back then, wicked sorry, but really glad to see it here. That being said, I have some questions on it, and especially the new section, section C18, dealing with LED signs. So do you want my whole list to run and run down it, or do you want me to just deal with one thing?
Well, we're not really answering, I don't think this is a back and forth question and answer opportunity necessarily, is it Eric? I mean, if you, I think you feel free to express whatever questions or concerns you have, and then we can, we can, we can address those in our deliberation.
So I'll throw, I'll throw stuff out, and you guys can keep it about it later.
Okay, great.
Okay, okay, cool. Okay. Very first page, the paragraph right above A, where it talks about administration and enforcement. It talks a lot about how this is new and it will apply to new signs and changes in signs and things like that going in. But then the very last sentence talks about which is erected or maintained contrary to the ordinance. So I just wanted to point out that word of maintained contrary to the ordinance.
Which page, I'm sorry, Julie, which page are you on?
Very first page, literally right above the letter A.
Oh, okay.
Looking at the phrase erected or maintained contrary to the ordinance. In the past, when we were dealing with things like awnings or...
Uh-oh, I've lost, I've lost my, my sound.
Well, Julie.
I think it buffered.
Yeah, I think Julie is, uh, she's back.
Okay.
Okay. I think it was buffering. Can I be, can you hear me clearly?
Yeah, yeah, you're back.
Okay, so with the implementation of section C, paragraph 18, the word ma, the phrase maintained contrary to this ordinance, maintained versus operated. Because when we look at section 18, we're gonna see that those signs are actually operated, programmed. So it'll make sense when I move down to those, I just wanted to raise attention to that one word. Looking at the section, section A, subsection 2, paragraph A, when it talks about such signs shall include wall projecting marquee signs and awnings. Just making a mental note, do we need to add anything in there regarding the new section 18 type signs? I think they're called dynamic displays. Same thing at the very top of page three, just again, just throwing out notes for, you know, if and when you have to tighten things up or clean things up, I love a lot of the rest of this. So just going straight to section 18. And section 18 is talking about dynamic display signs, also known as electronic message center. And my questions really all center around paragraph 18, letter D. So the sign that's at the high school over on High Street, and the sign that's at the church near the car wash, sorry, not High Street, Silver Street. So the sign that's at the high school on Silver Street, and the sign that's at the church, the one that has the living closet and the food pantry. Those both have the same type of operative, what would be called dynamic display signs. And so the paid part in there about lights being no greater than .3 foot candle above ambient light conditions. When Eric and I dealt with this before, and I also worked with the Mr. Snow before on this, because in the winter, people would see these signs, and even though it was fine all the way, otherwise year round, people would bring complaints to the church, saying that it was too bright in the morning. That's because the trees had no leaves anymore, so they were saying it was too bright. My question is, how is that going to be measured when they talk about maintaining? How is it, does it mean maintain as in how something functions? Or does it mean maintain and how it operates on a daily basis? And when it talks about signs must have photocells, does it specifically require that if the sign that's installed now doesn't have a photocell for maintenance, do you have to go out and buy a new sign? If the sign's not designed to take one, so example, again, I cross-reference the fact that I'm not singling out the church, but I am pointing out that both the church and the school use the same style of signs. And so I know for the church one, it's set in the programming that they use a different color font at certain times of day as a way to dim the lights, so that, especially during the winter. So those are the kind of things I'm questioning. I know the very first paragraph said this applies to new signage and changed signage. But how will this be applied to, will this be applied to existing? If so, how? If a complaint comes up, how will this work? Those kind of nuts and bolts questions are what I wanted to come today and talk about. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else in the public who would care to speak at this time? Going once, going twice?
Sorry, can I just add on that I love that we're starting this out now, because as Eric said, figuring this out, moving forward, especially as cannabis expands and other things expand. Having this so that it works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it for, for public input. I think the, the planning board, so do we, do we have a motion to close the planning board's public hearing? I'll second that. I'll do a roll call. Charles Roberts, yes. George Tlumses? You're muted, George. Thumbs up. For the record, George gave a thumbs up.
Yes, yes, sorry about that.
Mark Maloney? David Chichester?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you. The public hearing is closed for the planning board. Phil?
Chuck, I made a procedural mistake and forgot to open the public hearing for the EDC. I thought you'd do that retroactively.
I thought you did, I thought you opened it. You did a roll call.
We opened the meeting, but I guess, okay, fair enough. So then I guess we should close the public hearing. And do I have a motion to do that?
I'll move to do that.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. I'll do a roll call vote. I'm in favor of closing it. Philip Elmer. Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Any other EDC counselors show up? Okay, it passes here. We've closed the public hearing for EDC.
All right, so the EDCs welcome to eavesdrop on the rest of our meeting, if they are, if they're interested. Have some really, yes, some, some good things coming up, but you're also free to excuse yourselves. So we're gonna move on. I see that Emily Ash has joined us. Thank you, Emily. Hi.
Hi.
When did you drop in? I didn't see you until just a couple minutes ago.
I'm a ninja, Charles.
But, well, you're here, you're here for, for the ZBA recommendation and for, and for any other words that this itself is.
If I could interrupt, Chuck?
Sure.
The city councilors had a long meeting last night, and I think we may, we, they have my permission to bail.
Okay, yeah, you're free, free to bail.
I know we'll close, but I'm actually gonna ask a question about that, a question about the signs after you're finished. You, you closed the public hearing, but I had a question about something that was brought up.
Is that okay, Eric?
Yes, that's okay. So you can ask a question.
Okay, it doesn't count as deliberation?
No, it's just a question, maybe clarification.
Okay.
So I, I had actually two questions. One was, one was that Julie brought up about the dynamic displays. I found that interesting because it's right in our neighborhood. I brought that up before. What is proposed for the enforcement of that? The building inspector, is that what we're supposed to have happening?
Yes, as it currently is, the inspector of buildings is the enforcer.
Okay. And my question on the sandwich boards is the, I'm on disability access also, so I am delighted that the sandwich board signs are gonna be able to go out without the permits. I, you know, without a permit from the licensing board. How do you see that fitting in? I guess this would be for Eric. How do you see that fitting in? Like, who's gonna be able to check about people getting, I read through it briefly, about people getting by on the sidewalks, wherever the sandwiches are. It's gonna be so.
If the sandwich board sign is improperly placed, if this ordinance is adopted, then there'll be enforcement from the enforcement, code enforcement officer and the inspector of buildings. So if someone, if we adopt this ordinance, the city council votes it in, and the sandwich board sign is placed in, not in compliance with the new standards for sandwich board signs, then the restaurant or business owner can be told to put it in the right location.
Okay.
Right. And so somewhere, somewhere in here, there, it's, it's, it's described, you know, how, it says, you know, sandwich boards shall not exceed 3 feet, 2 feet in width.
The licensing commission probably had similar standards, but it's good to have standards for all sandwich board signs will be the same in size, at least, or maximum size.
Yeah, so it's, so 17B talks about, and, and, and C, talk about those issues directly.
And, and so my last question is, did, did we look at that with an, because I didn't do the measurements before I came to this. Did we look at that with an eye to all of the ADA guidelines? As you were writing.
This, this has factored in ADA guidelines, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
If, if I could just add before my guys disappear, that, to say that our next meeting is on March 8th, and we'll be taking this up then, at 6:00 PM, location, city, meeting room, second floor, or via WebEx as required. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna sign out. Thanks very much, guys.
If you ask me.
Counselor Elmer?
Thanks for joining.
Take care. Okay, we're gonna move on to our next order of business, which is a ZBA recommendation, the application of Kevin Lebel for property located at 330 George, oh, George is gonna, George is going to bow out at this time.
Yes.
So thank you for getting the public hearing, George, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Take care, George.
Sorry, I have to leave.
That's okay. So, so this is a ZBA recommendation for the application of Kevin Lebel for property located at 338 High Street. Assessors Tax Map 107 Lot 3, which is located in the general commercial zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 204.9, C36, 208.3, and 208.4 of zoning ordinance in order to allow the sale of used motor vehicles at this location. And I see that Mr. Lebel is here. Would you like to talk about your project, please, and so let us know where, why, when, and how?
Sure. I'm currently selling cars down on Montague City Road. And with the bridge being closed, it's pretty much cut my traffic down to none to nil. It's actually had a negative effect on my used car business as well as my auto body shop. So my father owns the property at 338 High Street, which AMR ambulance leases most of the property. My plan or my hope is to be able to put my used cars up there and use the front section of that building as an office. I've done some measuring. It looks like I could probably put 12 cars there. I figure each car at eight feet wide was give plenty of room, so I'm looking for your blessings to do that.
Okay. So is, is your place now the, the place on the right, is he going to the overpass by the railroad?
My place right now, I have the ski jump or the hill climb in my backyard. I'm right across some AmeriGas and Cerner Heat. I'm not the one right down the bottom there. I'm further back toward Turner's, if you will.
Okay. Eric, has, has there, has there been any correspondence from the DPW on this, or any, or anything from the town?
Yes, we did transmit it out to all the departments listed, as we normally do, and only got back comments from the engineering superintendent, who had no issues or comments, and the board of health, just confirmed the board of health. The name superintendent and the board of health, yes, no comments or issues.
Okay. Would you be changing or any kind of lighting, any kind of, any kind of signage that you would be going to getting a sign permit for, sort of apropos?
Not, not at this point, I wouldn't. I can't guarantee down the road I would look to do different, but I have no plans, it's present moment in life to do anything. My plan is to keep the front of the building up nicer than it is, make sure the lot is mowed out by the road. Just kinda clean the property up while I'm there.
Yep. Would you be doing?
I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering, so would you be doing any kind of repairs here, or is it just purely a sales office?
It'd just be sales, that's it.
It's purely a sales office, so you're not gonna have, so there, there're not gonna be any cars that are waiting to get worked on, or?
They'll be at my other facility on Montague City Road.
Okay. Emily?
Thanks, Charles. So, Mr. Lebel, what, what about with the ambulances that are coming in and out of that facility right now? If you're gonna have 12 cars parked there, can you just tell me a little bit about how you're gonna make sure that the ambulances are gonna, you know, be able to get in and out without having any issues?
Well, the ambulances, they go down the side of the building, or up the side of the building, depending which way they're going out, right out straight to High Street. My cars will be, if you're standing in front of it, my cars will kind of be to the right of it, if you will, in front of the building and out by the road, that little island by the road.
I, yeah, I'm looking at it now on Google Earth, so I see that there's the, the way that the ambulances take. So it would be out in front there, if you're saying?
It'd be out, it'd be out by the road. And I think I lost you guys. I don't know what I did.
Well, I just, I just brought the, I brought the, I tried to bring the PDF up on the screen. Are people seeing it?
No, I can't.
No, Charles, it's, it's not. There you go.
Okay. So High Street is right here, no, High Street's right here, I'm sorry. The cars will be out by the island, which, and also in front of the building. And the ambulances, they come around between the bicycle shop and the building, and they go straight out to High Street.
So, so this is the ambulance egress and ingress line here. This is where you're gonna be, this is where you're gonna be sort of parking cars, and what's gonna be happening down in here?
Down here, that's where the, all the ambulance employees park is around here.
All right, so this is.
They basically, they, they park from here to the edge of the building. They park from, this is grass right here, they park from here out to High Street.
So this is the only area right here where you're gonna be displaying new cars?
Correct, right in front of the building and out by the road. You know, that little grassy area, can you see my arrow? It's gonna, you get parked right, right here.
They wouldn't be driving, they wouldn't be parking on the grass, would they?
No, 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 there's, there's, I'm just using the grass as a marker. This is all blacktop right here.
Yeah, I'm not able to see, I'm not able to see, I'm not able to see.
Kinda goes right around the building, of course, but yeah, I'd be parked in blacktop, it'll look neat. It won't look any different than the employees parking their cars out there, basically. So I won't be changing, I won't be changing the look of the building, other than the fact I plan to keep it up with the grass and whatnot.
So this is 50 feet here?
Yes.
So the most you could get in there is five cars, right?
If you go, but if you do, six times eight is 48 feet, so I'll be able to put six there.
Okay.
And six out here. I'm not saying there's gonna be 12 cars there at all times, I'm just trying to give myself a little bit of space. If I happen to end up in a situation where I have 12 cars, I can legally put them out there.
So how much, how much room is there from the face of the building to the grass?
Honestly, I didn't measure that.
Because if you're gonna fit 12 cars there, you're gonna, I guess you're gonna be stacking them up.
Currently, the ambulance, I mean, in the past, when B, when BHS was there, and Medicare was there, there was more employees. And you had employees parking in front of the building, and you also had employees parking out by the road here. It was plenty of room to get between the two sets of vehicles.
So you don't know what this dimension is?
Honestly, I don't. I didn't measure it, I apologize.
But it's, it's supposed to be two cars deep, so it's gotta be like at least, like, what is that, like 35, 36 feet deep?
I would say at least. I would say at least. Like I said, back when the place is busy and had more employees, employees would park along the road, and they would park along the front of the building, and there was still plenty of room to get in between there.
Right, but I mean, COVID is gonna end eventually, right? So we're, we're gonna bring back.
Employees.
Right, let me finish. Mr. Lebel, let me finish my thought, please.
Yeah, no problem, I didn't mean to be rude.
So my point is, COVID's gonna end, they might have their employees back. So can you just explain what the parking situation's gonna look like for the employees with the potential 12 cars there?
Sure. The employees, can you see my arrow on the screen?
No, but.
Oh, okay.
But this is the employee parking lot for the, for the ambulance, right?
So they could park along the building. They could park along the grassy area, and they could also park up by, there's a, there's a window shop on the other side. Used to be a house, the window company isn't there. They could park along the woods right there as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
They'll have plenty of parking.
Thank you for explaining that.
Oh, no problem, I didn't mean to cut you off.
So I'm gonna stop sharing. Mark, do you have any thoughts?
Well, kind of a thought or a clarifying question. I'm just wondering in terms of, you know, the permissions that we're giving. I appreciate the thinking that there's space for 12 display vehicles. But Kevin, I'm wondering about the vehicle that you drive in while you're staffing, and I'm wondering about the vehicle that one or two customers might drive in as they're perusing your cars. So I'm wondering in terms of like where it's marked off AMR parking spots, like, do you have rights or access to that parking space as well within the lease? Or do we need to be factoring in within your room for 12 vehicles, just like some, you know, some commercial parking for you and for customers?
Right. I have, I have, my father owns the property. He owns the building and all the property there. I do the plow in there as well. I don't think there'd be an issue with AMR if I took a couple of their spots, as long as your employees still had places to park.
Yeah. I guess, so that, so Charles, that would kind of be like my question or concern, and I guess just even here. Um I guess, so that, so Charles, that would kind of be like my question or concern and I guess just even hearing that from Kevin, I don't know if that's kind of sufficient. I, I don't know in terms of like real estate law and whatnot, like if Kevin can just be like, well, some of these parking spots might be used. By other people, even though you're leasing some of this space. So I just, I don't know if we're kind of offering special permits or permissions for things that aren't ours to offer. Um I'm not hugely worked up about it, but it's just a question that I would have of how are we ensuring that there's indeed space for Kevin's customers? As well as AMR employees, you know?
Eric, what are the commercial, what are the commercial parking requirements for this, for this space um and, and use, Eric?
So the office space would be one space for every three hundred square feet. Uh. Yeah, and basically we get, we would ask, the ZBA is gonna ask very specific questions on the number of employees that he has. They're gonna ask specifically exactly where they're parking. So Mr. LaBelle may have to revise his plan based on your input. To show the ZBA more clearly the questions that you're asking.
Right. I mean, my thought about this is that, is that this is, this is, uh it's a high traffic area. There's, there's ambulances coming and going. There are cars being, there, there, there are, it's a, it's a, it's a sales lot for automobiles. There's guest parking, there's customer parking, there's employee parking and, 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 and none of this is, is discernible from the site plan. To me, the site plan does not convey the information that we need to, to really make a recommendation here and, 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 and. And I don't know what the ZBA is gonna think about it, but um I, that's, those, those are my thoughts.
Let me ask, uh, well, can I say something and ask a question?
Sure.
Uh I will have no employees there. I'll be the only one there. My employees work at my shop at Montague City Road. So we could take that out of the equation, if you will. Um if I cut a couple spots out from in front of the building and leave it for customers, would that appease the board? So let's just say we.
Emily?
How are we gonna make sure that, how are you gonna make sure, Mr. LaBelle, that the customers aren't gonna be? Are gonna be parking in the designated spots and not bark, um blocking a potential ambulance from leaving?
Um I will put signs, customer parking on the front of the building. And of course, if you're looking at a car, I will be out there with them and if I see they're parked in the way, I'll ask them to move their vehicle over to this designated parking spot.
Right, but I mean, my, I guess my concern is, you know. People aren't always ones to follow rules. You know, um might not follow signs, so I guess that's, that's one of my concerns. And then also, I mean, we have. The police station pretty close right across the way, so it's just the high traffic that also. Um I'm interested in just learning a bit more about.
Yeah, I mean. Mark, did you ask something, you had your hand raised a second ago, didn't you, Mark?
Well, I, I mean, I just in terms of Mr. LaBelle's question, I, I, for me, I would feel. Much better about making a positive recommendation on a special permit if there was maybe even right, like. Some, some customer and employee parking written into this plan, whether it's in the front or whether there is kind of an agreement. With AMR that some of these side spots will now become, you know, LaBelle Auto Sales Customer Parking. Uh I think that if there was kind of that written agreement or documentation of this is the customer parking within this plan. And it sounds like that would probably make it easier for the ZBA as well. Um I, I mean, I, you know, I, I hear the concerns around that there's ambulances coming and going as well, but I do, you know. That's why they got sirens and if somebody, you know, hopefully somebody wouldn't park their car right in the middle of an entrance or an exit and if they do. You know, I mean, what are you gonna do? Uh but for me, we could write some clear, some clear customer parking signs, some clear. Um AMR parking signs, don't park here if you don't work for AMR. Um would make the difference and you know, and I. Frankly, if you're looking to maximize your space, I would think that if it's possible to get an agreement with AMR that a couple of those spots would be yours. Then you really do have that full frontage for a display. But at the same time, if they hold a lease and they're not into that, then I guess maybe it would be right, like right in front of the storefront, Mr. LaBelle. But it, for me, it would make it feel a little easier to just have that explicitly teased out as opposed to like, ah, we'll make it work, you know?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, right, and so, and so this is a, um Eric, this, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a special permit that requires a site plan review, right?
All special permits require site plan review.
And so if you look at, if you look at the requirements for site plan review, I mean, I mean, the drawing that, that you're supplying us does not give us the information we need. To make the decision to make these decisions. It doesn't show, it doesn't really show um uh parking lines, striping. It, it should, it should, there should be addressing signage, especially for the ambulance. I mean. I mean, the things, if you look, if you look at what's required for site plan review, I mean, there's, there's a lot of information. It's not included in what you're giving us, which is why we're having a difficult time and why we're asking these questions.
So I, I think Sarah wanted to ask a question. Ashley, I'm sorry. Emily, I'm sorry, Emily, I'm terrible with names.
Third time's a charm, Mr. LaBelle, third time's a charm.
Don't take it personally, I'm horrible with names. Uh you had your hand up.
I did. Are you good if I answer, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm, go, go ahead, Emily. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
My question, Mr. LaBelle, was how long is the lease for the ambulance service?
They're there for, they get, their lease is, they got till next December. And come next December, they have the option of signing for one more year or they can get out. You know, I don't mean, we're gonna throw them. I mean, that, you know, they, they decide for one more year or they're, they're gonna leave on their own.
Absolutely, right. No, I, I was just curious because um that was tied into Mr. um. Maloney's point of parking spaces and Mr. Roberts' point of striking and whatnot, so I was just curious. Thank you.
So if I redo the site plan and drop a couple cars, will that appease you guys as far as show where customer parking would be on the site plan?
Well, I mean. I mean, yeah, I mean, in a certain way, it's, it's, it's the, it's the, the ZBA that you, that you, you really have to appease. We're here, we're here to make a recommendation. And so, so, I mean, some of our recommendations may be that the ZBA asked for a more detailed site plan.
Okay, I mean, I want everybody to be happy and.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't think, I, I, I think that nobody here is being obstructionist. I think we support the idea of the business, or at least I do anyway. And, and we're, we're, what we're, what we're trying to do is just make sure that, that um. That the ordinance is followed and the, and the, and the parking and onsite circulation is gonna be safe. People entering and exiting the site's gonna be safe, the ambulances aren't gonna be interfered with. And if there's adequate parking for, for the people working in the ambulance service, yourself and, and whatever customers are there. So those are, those are the issues we're trying to get at.
Okay. I've talked to Greenfield Auto Specialist across the street who also sells cars. And they're more than, they're more than um agreement, agreement with the idea. They're actually pretty happy to have me over there. We can send customers back and forth. So I think I'll be a good fit into the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
I've talked to the owner, John Loeb and Bill Lightner, and they're very happy with the idea. Just throwing that out there.
Well, it's good you talk to your neighbors.
Right, more, more competition is always better for everyone.
Oh, that's true. Well, we work, I've worked on their cars, they work on my cars anyways. So like I said, we can send customers back and forth. I don't have what you want, but go across the street and see John or vice versa. So just letting you know, like, you know, there's no obstruction from the neighbors. They're pretty happy with the idea.
Okay. Any more questions from the board at this point? David, did you have any comments?
Nope, I'm good with the conversation.
Okay. Um. I didn't do this, but, but David, I'm gonna elevate you to a voting member. Officially stated for the record.
Okay.
Um. Uh. Should we, do we, do we have enough, has, has there been enough conversation and enough sort of uh thoughts gathered to, to articulate a motion?
Charles, can I just ask a clarifying question then? So we, we would take a motion. With kind of like a, a recommendation that the ZBA asks for more specific things within. A site plan and then we would. Bow it out, the things that we're asking for within a recommendation?
That's what I would be inclined to do. Eric?
I would recommend against that. Um the ZBA, you probably would not like that. They're gonna be asked for the information they're gonna need and um. They don't need anybody to tell them to ask for disinformation.
We don't wanna rile up Mr. Maloney.
Yeah, exactly. So uh, I mean, I, I just wanted to keep that I worked with Mr. LaBelle many times on this site plan. And uh he had to do, redo it three times and I warned him the third time I'd still be inadequate. So I'm sure he's, we're gonna work together, Mr. LaBelle and I, to revise the plan to send to the ZBA before March ten.
So it sounds like, Eric, you're saying that we could just go ahead and issue a positive recommendation? That we've had the conversation that we've had, Mr. LaBelle has heard the concerns and that that's sufficient?
If you, if you think so, yes. If you think the idea of a car sales place at that location, if it's done properly. Then you would recommend a positive, you know, you forward a positive recommendation.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I think we could forward a positive recommendation and without telling the ZBA what they need to think about. Just say, we forward a positive, positive recommendation contention upon a developed site plan.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Emily?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a roll call. Charles Roberts, I vote yes. Um Mark Maloney?
Hi.
David Chichester?
Hi.
Emily Ash?
No.
Okay, and uh uh Nat, George are out. Okay, so uh. That's it. Uh good luck with the ZBA. Mr. LaBelle?
Thank you. I thank you so much for your help. I appreciate it. Uh Eric, I'll be giving you a call tomorrow.
Sounds good.
And I will get it straight now.
Sounds good.
Well, have a good night. Thank you.
Take care, Kevin.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you again.
Good night. Good night. All right. Let's see. David?
Uh Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question, which you probably uh you, you might want to rule irrelevant. But I was walking around all of that property, the, the adjacent property today. Uh and it is a junkyard. Uh it's not Mr. LaBelle's property, but the one next door. Is there any, does the? Planning Board have anything to say about that?
No, that's an enforcement issue. Um. We, I don't really think we can. I know what you're talking about. Um I know the area you're talking about.
Talking about.
Yeah.
Hmm, right.
You, you could, as a board member, reach out to the code enforcement official, Mark Snow, Inspector Billings, and issue a complaint.
Okay.
Uh this isn't my deal, but can I throw something in? I do know that when, I do know that when Al Osecheck passes away, that WT is supposed to be taking that property over. I imagine they're, they would clean it up.
What's WT?
SD scrap yard across the street.
Oh.
Used to be Kramer's.
Oh Kramer's.
They're supposed to be taking that property over. Just throwing that out there. I, I know it's none of my business, but I figure I let you guys know that.
All right, well, that's interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Have a good night.
Okay, take care. Bye-bye.
You as well. Bye-bye.
Um. Let's see. Discussion items, Planning Board Representative for the Planning and Construction Committee. Um I'm not completely up to speed on what the Planning and Construction Committee does. Um. Eric, could, could you, could you give a, give a little background so everybody is, is aware of the, of the duties and responsibilities of this? I do know that the uh, that the representative of the planning board is required to sit on this board. And for uh for the last, for the last little while, Amy McMahon has been. That, that person, but she stepped, she stepped away from that role. Um. And I believe that what they do is, is they, they advise and, and, and stay. Sort of informed of all new construction projects and, and, and renovation of, of town-owned property. Is that right, Eric?
That is correct. I'm not sure often they meet, I think they meet once a month, um at the most, once a month.
Um. It's a, it sounds like a really interesting thing and it's kind of in my, in my wheelhouse of interest of, and, but I don't have the time to do it, so I can't volunteer. Um Mark, you're already on the uh. The uh Community Preservation Act Committee, right?
Yeah, I feel, and Charles, I, I'm similarly, I'd be interested, but I just, I'm extended far enough as far as the floating board goes and I can't take on another monthly commitment.
Right, right, understood. Um. Uh David, I will, I will mention, I will say that the, the, the mayor did mention your name as somebody who might be interested in taking on this if you, if you have an interest or. Emily, you're the only other person here. I would, I guess I would, I would defer to you first if you wanted to take this on.
Well, thank you. Um. I don't know if I told you guys, but I left my Boston gig to start my own firm here in Greenfield.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and that was back in November. Um so. I don't have the bandwidth right now. I'm trying to, you know, get my business up, my own law firm off the ground here in Greenfield and um. I love being part of the planning board, but I just, I can't make another monthly commitment at this point. So David?
Do you have an interest, David?
Uh I, I have an interest, but I'm a, a little concerned about the uh, the time that I have to devote. Uh I'm wanting to apply my attentions to the planning board primarily right now until I can feel as though I can get up to speed with that. Uh so I would like to defer for a, a while in hopes of maybe in several months that I'll be able to pile on a little bit more.
All right, is this, Eric, is this something that's, that's, that's mandated by town charter? Did the planning board have a representative?
Yeah, let me just, just turn this phone off for a second.
Charles, if it's mandated, I'm willing to do it until David gets up to speed.
So.
Okay.
I just don't wanna commit, like, I committed to clerk for three years. I just don't wanna.
You did!
I just don't wanna commit for three years.
Understood. Thank you. Let's just see what Eric has to say about this.
Sorry about that. So what I was gonna say is that I, I could have sworn the mayor mentioned that it is in fact not in the charter. And that it doesn't in fact require a planning board member, but it traditionally has, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. I'd have to double check.
Eric, just, just. Okay, fine. Put me down.
Well, we could, we could also check in with Natty and see if Natty is willing to do a temporary. Emily, before you just like take this one for the team, we could reach out and see would Natty be willing to do it even on a ten? If Dave has the strong interest, but just needs a few months. Maybe Natty would do it for a few months, or maybe we could just kick it down the road for a few months so that you're not. I would say let's at least see if Natty will do it for a little while before Emily has to take this on.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Um. Has anybody done any research into this committee?
No.
I have, I have to admit I haven't.
I've heard it, we talk about it. I, I feel like I've heard the city council talk about it.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna look it up quickly and see what, see what uh. What, 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 what this? What the ci, what the website says here. Um committees. Uh. It's a committee, right, Eric?
Yes.
Yeah. Constructional committee.
Yep, Planning and Construction Committee.
Planning and Construction Committee. All right, uh City of Greenfield Charter, planning, construction, building, municipal buildings and other facilities. Um. Mode of appointment and term of office, there should be a planning and construction committee, which may be referred to as a planning, blah, blah, blah. Uh comprising uh seven members, six of the committees will be, six of the committee members shall be appointed by the mayor for terms of three years. And two members shall expire each year and making appointments to the committee, the mayor shall seek persons having experience in architecture, engineering, construction, real estate and law. The seventh member of the committee shall be designated annual by the school committee. Powers and duties, the planning and construction committee shall be responsible for monitoring the physical condition of all buildings and other facilities. The committee shall meet from time to time with representatives of the municipal agencies. To evaluate the need for additions, renovations or remodeling of any existing building or facility or facility. Or for the construction of new buildings or other facilities. The committee shall file writ reports at least annually with the mayor, in which it shall make recommendations as to the need for any project or price. As to the need for any project or projects. Whether any, whenever any construction work on any municipal building or other facility is authorized. The planning and construction committee shall be responsible for all the work in connection with the project, including. Site planning, surveying, engineering, studies, architectural plans, specifications. And supervision of construction, that's a lot.
Wow. That's all, you know.
Uh, and you know, that stuff always sounds scarier than it is, um, really, it's just, it's a matter of. You know, you're not, I mean. There's a lot of other people sort of involved in those, in those processes, um, but I, I, it seems like you would. You know, if, if, for instance, you know, I, I'm imagining, I'm imagining that they're involved in, in the design. And planning for the new fire department and they're involved in those meetings where the site plans are reviewed. And they are, they, they, there's an opportunity for people on that committee to be able to provide input in the, into that process. Um, things like that, so. You know, it's a, it's a really, it'd be, it'd be a really interesting thing to be a part of. Um, and especially if you're interested and concerned about, you know. What's happening downtown with public buildings? And I, I wish I had time to do it, cause I'd love to do it, but I just don't.
Well, you said real estate and law.
Ding 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 ding. Um. What, do you wanna wait and see what, see what Natty has to say?
We'll see what Natty has to say, if Natty doesn't have time, I'll do it until David feels comfortable to shake over.
Okay.
It's getting me away even more with all of those qualifications.
Yeah.
Okay, but you didn't hear anything.
It, it looks like, it looks like they meet monthly and, um. I don't have any, I don't see any minutes here to see what kind of things they talked about.
There's a list of time they meet?
Yeah, here's some minutes, yeah, they, they meet at four, so that, that might be a limiting factor for some people. There are not a lot of minutes.
Natty works in Brattleboro now, he probably wouldn't be able to make the meeting.
There are not a lot of minutes here.
Sorry.
That's okay, I'm not seeing a lot of minutes here posted, like, the last minutes are from. Um, it's a no quorum meeting from, uh, February two thousand nineteen, oh, here's one. Yeah, that's the last, the last set of minutes.
Yeah, let me, uh, say a few things about the committee. One, the charter was written before we came up with a central maintenance department. So the, the central maintenance department does a lot of that, was listed, that you read off. That exists now, that didn't exist when the charter formed that committee. Um, they, it's hard for them to meet and to get a quorum, they don't really do that much, so. I don't know if that's a good or bad thing, but they probably should do more, but. That's, that's it, cause you read the meeting minutes, they don't, they have difficulty getting a quorum.
Okay, yeah.
So it may be a low stakes.
Commitment there.
Commitment.
You can, you can put me down.
All right, you know, we can always change it up, if, if it suddenly becomes overwhelming, then we can, we can, we can appoint someone else.
There we go.
And we're still looking for another alternate, if anybody has any ideas. Or friends or acquaintances.
You know what, um, Charles, a long ways back, Rachel Gordon. Had hit me up and wanted to have coffee and talk about the planning board because she had interest and I. Things got in the way and that's probably like nine months or more ago. Um, so why don't I make a point of reaching out to her, because she, she specifically approached me because she wanted to hear more about what it was like to sit on the planning board. Um, so maybe the interest and bandwidth is still there. Um, so I'll reach out to her and, and see if she wants to have that conversation and see if I can nudge her to learn more and express interest again.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also have, um, a friend that is really involved locally, that has expressed interest. Um, I, I guess I didn't remember that. We were still looking for an alternate, so I'll also reach out. And let her know, um.
Okay.
Tell her.
Great, great, yeah. Um, anybody we could get to help round out the, uh, the quorum would be great. Planning Board, so next order of business, uh. Planning Board Priorities and Initiatives, so we're, we're, we're in our holding pattern now, waiting for FERCOG to get back to us. With their initial draft of the, uh. Open Space Cluster Development Initiative, um, that's gonna be great. Board and Staff Reports, I, I have nothing to report myself, um, anybody else? Have things they feel like sharing with the board?
I, I do, just a reminder for other people to remind me if you don't mind, um, so Natty, I know he's not here tonight, but. Last time we talked about him, kind of like giving us a walkthrough, um, on the.
GIS.
Yeah.
He's trained in GIS.
Yeah, um, I'm still like really interested in that. I, I, I do wanna take some time and do that, so when he's here and he has the time, I, I would really like to learn about that, please.
Yeah, yeah, great, that would be, that'd be helpful, I think it's, uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I mean, i- if Natty's not available, I mean, he operates, so let him do it, that's great, but, um, I could give the same training, I'm an expert in the master jazz.
Oh.
Jazz.
Wow, Eric.
Yeah, um, do people have the bandwidth for that tonight, or would we like to think about that as, at a specific time and down the road in the future? Emily?
Down the road in the future, I'm sorry, I've been in court since eight thirty this morning.
Oh, yeah, right.
Plus it's not on the agenda.
Plus it's not on the agenda, I think bandwidth seems to be the, uh, the order of the day, doesn't it?
Hey Charles, I can do a quick CPC update for you guys, very quickly.
Okay, great.
Uh, so we are honing in on a draft community preservation plan. Which would identify the prior, the funding priorities, project priorities for the coming year. Uh, that would be very heavily based off of all of the existing plans, I think a couple of months back I talked about this, of reviewing the master plan. The open space and recreation plan, the municipal vulnerability plan, um, and just looking for what were the common themes. Within housing, open space and recreation, uh, historic preservation, et cetera. So with the FERCOG, actually, we are getting some technical assistance from the FERCOG, not, not me, but other staff members from the FERCOG. Working on that and we should, they, they'll be presenting a draft plan. Uh, next week at next Thursday's meeting to garner more feedback. That, that plan will still need to be massaged out a little bit, but we would then be looking at. Doing some community outreach and public hearings to present those priorities in the later spring. Uh, with the intention of accepting applications for projects next fall to be funded kind of in the, the later winter of next year. So it is, it's moving ahead. Um, you know, nothing too like tight or set quite yet, but we are starting to actually like build that foundation. For this annual program, so that's exciting and I will definitely let you all know as, as we get closer to having a, a draft plan. To review and comment on, I think it would probably still be another month or so. Want, for the committee to give the FERCOG feedback, tighten that up, and then I would have something that even if not completely final. Would probably be sufficiently fleshed out to show to you all, just to keep you in the loop and keep you engaged.
Great. Thanks for, thanks for taking that on and, uh, you know.
I have a question.
Jay, David?
Yeah, uh, Mark, I, I think this, I love this program, uh, is that ultimately the council's vote?
It is, it is, uh, we, the Community Preservation Committee, kind of, you know, monitors needs. Sets the priorities in the plan, accepts the applications and then makes recommendations to the city council. Who make the final decisions around the awarding of funds. So yeah, we are not, we don't really have a ton of authority, we are a body that makes recommendations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great, thanks, Mark. Um, anything else? In, uh, hearing nothing, I, I would request a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
All right. Eager here. I know there's the right, the right combination is out there someplace and I'm sure Eric has recorded.
Whatever names you want, wherever you want them.
Right, okay. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Unanimous, no roll call required.